You're all set to begin, sir.
I would like to now call the North Providence Town Council March monthly meeting to order. I'm actually gonna let us, if we could all say the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you. Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible action and vote regards to the acceptance of meeting minutes for a meeting of February 2nd, 2021. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman McCullough, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? If there be none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close the eyes, have it. Item number two, proposed ordinances, notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town council did a passage of the following proposed ordinances. Item number two, ordinance 21-001, an ordinance adopting and and enacting a new code of ordinances for the town of North Providence, Rhode Island, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not including therein, providing for the manner of amending such code and providing when such code in this ordinance shall become effective. Mark, I'm just advertising for a public hearing?
No, Mr. President, that's the public, this is the public hearing.
This is the public hearing, yes. So if there's any of the public want to speak for or against, whatever.
Ralph, is there anybody raising their hand?
Any public with any questions or comments on that first topic, please raise your hand. No hands raised, Council President.
Unless there's questions from the council, motion will adopt, I guess.
They do have a motion to adopt?
Will move.
Motion been made by Councilman Amerigi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Laportio, any further questions? If there be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number two, proclamation and recognition of Jonette Michelle, President Odiello and Councilman Amerigi would like to present a proclamation and recognition of Jonette Michelle. Councilman Amerigi?
Um, excuse me, thank you, Mr. President, and of all, please bear with me, I'm losing my voice a little bit, but story here, kind of flew into the radar because we had such a terrible year of 2020, but one of our own residents was actually our Rhode Island's representative for the Miss USA pageant this year in Memphis, Tennessee. I made contact with Michelle back in November, right around the time of the pageant and unfortunately due to her media obligations that went along with the pageant, we weren't able to link up for this, but at that time I had approached the president about, you know, issuing the resolution congratulating her because I think it's great when any of our town goes on to, you know, national recognition, so I know that Ms. Michelle is is in attendance. If Ralph would maybe let her in and I will read the resolution into the record.
Is that the one you look, oh, here she is now.
Thank you, Ralph. Everyone say hello, this is Jonay Michelle, Michelle, she's a resident of North Providence since 2018 and I will now take this opportunity to read the resolution of the council into the record. Here we have a resolution in recognition of Jonay Michelle, whereas the North Providence Town Council desires to recognize Jonay Michelle, who represented Rhode Island and North Providence in the Miss USA pageant on November 9th, 2020, in Memphis, Tennessee at Graceland and was a former member of the New England Patriots cheerleading team. And whereas Jonay resided in North Providence since July of 2018 and received her Bachelor's of Science in Human Services from Post University in May of 2017, student athlete participating in cross-country track and field and cheerleading. And whereas Jonay wrote her undergraduate studies, worked as a mentor in an after-school program that provided services for children who were in the DCF system, who had behavioral and mental health problems. And whereas Jonay was a volunteer with Boston's Medical Center, Connecticut Children's Hospital and Dana Farber Center and served as a dancing coordinator and mentor at the Boys and Girls Club of Newport County, as well as a camp counselor for a special needs camp. And whereas Jonay is the founder of, this is her, she is me, Finding the Strength to Walk Away, a program to spread awareness and prevent domestic violence towards women. She has attended various support groups and women shelters to share her story and plans to grow her organization to help those in need and provide them with educational tools and resources. Whereas the hard work, loyalty and commitment exhibited by Jonay Michelle is an inspiration to all citizens, young and old across America. And be it resolved that a copy of this resolution on Jonay Michelle in evidence of the admiration and the esteem of the North Providence Town Council be a further result that the Town Council of the Town of North Providence extends its gratitude and congratulations to Jonay Michelle and wishes much success in the future. Signed and steel, the second day of March, in the year our Lord 2021, Ken Amerigi, Town Council, District Two, and Dino Odiello, Council President. Ms. Michelle, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Say over.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, and Councilman Amerigi, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Just continue to make North Providence proud, I think it's awesome and and we're honored to have you here tonight. So on behalf of the Town Council, thank you so much for everything you've done and all, congratulations on all of your accomplishments, it's truly amazing.
And Council President, if she's interested in getting any of those programs off the ground in North Providence, I think, you know, we'd be more than happy to help.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And I did tell Jonay that, you know, in the next couple of weeks, as it starts to get nicer out, perhaps we could organize some meetings, I'd like to, you know, speak to her, a few of us obviously are very inclined towards you know, nonprofit and charitable work, so we hope to work with her going forward.
Thank you. Councilman Di Lorenzo?
Council President, Jonay, thank you so much for keeping North Providence great with what you do. We're gonna have a Senedale Festival come around August, we would love to see you there.
Thank you, I give up my crown on August 8th, so there might be a new Miss Rhode Island there.
That's okay, you can still come.
Okay, thank you.
You have to pass the torch to somebody.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
On behalf of the council, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close your eyes, have it, thank you very much, good luck.
Congratulations.
Okay, item number four, Coletti Farm Property, Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote on the purchase of the remaining lots of the Coletti Farm property, Mayor Lombardi.
Bringing him in now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I forwarded an additional map to you today, I asked the clerk to send it out to you, so those lots would be a little larger for you to see. So we were visited by the Coletti family, maybe a couple of months back and was, we talked about these properties and then met with the Realtor, Norm Happ. He came in again. So we can purchase these properties, which is on your map, you'll see up to the right lots, 1464 and 65. They're 4,000 square feet apiece, it's 8,000 foot a buildable lot. Lots 171, 171, two more 4,000 square foot lots, which forms another buildable lot. And the third parcel would be 169, 187 and 188. That's forms a 9,004 square foot lot, which would be a third buildable lot. Now, in talking with the Realtors, a buildable lot in North Providence at this point in time is $50,000 to $60,000. I think this property, by the way, is more advantageous and worth more to us because as we say all the time, it abuts our property. Plus, we will also get a little more square footage from these, those paper roads. Also stop future use difference, yeah. This is a total of 28,204 square feet of property. The last time we met with the Coletti family, which was maybe about a month ago, they really would love for us to have it, I would love for us to have it. And the bottom line here, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, we could purchase this property for $50,000. To me, I think that's a no-brainer, hopefully this council will, how can I say, agree? But I don't know that we'll get the advantage to purchase that amount of square footage and three buildable lots and plus that last lot there, Lot 201, which is 3,200 square foot, that abuts our property too, so that's although that's not buildable, I think it's important because it abuts our property, so that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request and hopeful that this council would agree to for the sum of $50,000 for those additional lots. And I think I can tell you that this if there's any questions that I could answer for you guys.
Hey, does anybody have any questions for the mayor?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mario.
Do we have a plan for these properties at this point, or not yet?
Right now, Mario, the only plan for this property would be for recreational use, we're trying to put the dirt on the ground at the former property that we bought from the Pate family, which your DM is holding us up just a little, so for me to say to you, you have an immediate plan? No, I think once we develop that Pate property down on Ivan Street, I think the next step is to meet and see what everyone thinks about this property and also we're gonna be applying for more grant money so that it's not gonna cost us much to clean it up and develop it. But to answer your question, not right now. I think by purchasing it, Mario, it just protects us down the road.
All right, any other questions for the mayor? Okay, we have a motion to approve the property on Coletti Farm for the purchase, $50,000? Motion's been made by Councilman Matone, seconded by Councilman?
Second.
Second to Di Lorenzo, any further questions? If there be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm having a little trouble hearing, so bear with me, the feedback's really loud, I don't know if it's my iPad or if it's just
No, it keeps going in and out a little bit too.
Okay. Item number five, Utica and Martin Street abandonment petition, continuance, Town Council to consider the approval of a petition to abandon Utica and Martin Street, submitted by 1601 Middlespring Avenue LLC, the petition was advertised on July 10th, July 17th and 24th, 2020. It was continued to this date. Okay, this is the email from the attorney. Dear Attorney Welch, as you recall, I represent the applicant 1601 Middlespring Avenue LLC, who is scheduled to appear before the Town Council on March 2nd, 2021. The applicant is scheduled to appear before the Town's Planning Board on March 10th, 2021. Based on this, I respectfully request that the matter before the Town Council be continued until the Planning Board finalizes its decision. Thank you, kindly contact me at any time, sincerely, Mary B. Sakachi. Okay, do I have a motion to continue this to the April council meeting?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Matone, seconded by Councilman McCullough, any questions? If there be none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number six, Palmer Bar and Grill LLC, DBA Palmer Bar and Grill, summons was delivered to Laura Ashworth, registered agent for Palmer Bar and Grill LLC, DBA Palmer Bar and Grill located at 1449 Middlespring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to renew said licenses. This item was continued from the February 2nd, 2021 regular meeting. Is anyone on here from Palmer?
Yes, I'll move Laura in now.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, Mayor, Marian, a town clerk's just gonna give everyone a little update, just in case they did not see the email on what transpired today.
Okay, so Palmer got an approval and from the Board of Division of Taxation that they paid all of their state taxes. That got updated today and the last I knew, Laura, you guys were gonna call Tom from our tax department and try to set up some kind of a monthly payment for your town taxes, did that happen?
Laura? Yes, can you hear us? Now we can, yes.
Yeah, we spoke with them today.
Yeah, we spoke, this is David. I spoke with them today and I have to go tomorrow morning and set up an arrangement with them and that's actually the last thing to clear. Okay, okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. and Mrs. Ashworth?
You know, one question, Council President, was this from, I'm just, I know we had a few of them, was this one from just January, is this one from December too?
December.
December, okay, all right, the only question I have.
Yeah. And actually, from our side, we do want to say from our side, from Michael Altieri, myself and Laura, we want to appreciate the town allowing us to get ourselves and grind it out within the town without taking on depressing loans and go backwards. We did it in-house through North Providence, which we appreciate that from you guys to the customers to the neighborhood. Okay, thank you, no problem. We try to do our best for business here. Yes, you have, absolutely. Is there any further questions? So I'd like to have a special hearing two weeks out concerning this. If, you know, Tom approves a a payment plan for them tomorrow, then we won't have to have it, is there any issue with that from the council?
No.
Okay, so I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, seconded by Councilman Famigetti, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven, Jars Pub LLC, DBA, the Duke Kitchen and Spirits. Summons was delivered to Joseph J. Arroyo III, registered agent for Jars Pub LLC, DBA, the Duke Kitchen and Spirits, located at 1839 Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to renew said licenses. This item was continued from the February 2nd, 2021 regular meeting. Is Mr. Arroyo here?
Mr. President, I'll be recusing on this item.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for, Mayor, can you please update?
Yes, Mr. Arroyo came in today and paid his town taxes up to date and we received at 3:58 this afternoon, we received an email that was from the Division of Taxation. It says, to whom it may concern, Jars Pub LLC is in a payment agreement with the employer tax section. Total due is $4,799.58. He has issued a payment today in the amount of $2,000 and will make payments to the department on a weekly basis until balance is paid in full. Once it is, the liquor license will be fully released.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Arroyo?
No, I just, I have a general question, Council President. Going back even to the other, the gentleman that was here before him. I think we all understand there's tough times, there's good times and everything. I know both of these, I believe, were from December 1st. But I just think going forward, and I know we talked about something in the past, I mean, almost kind of like the good driving record. You know, at some point, if I was someone across the street or opened another bar and I paid all my taxes, you know, and I'm just saying it was up to date, not that there's anything we can't work, we want to work with everybody. But, you know, at some point, it's gotta say, you know, and when does, you know, when does this happen if it just, you know, keeps, all the businesses, I just want to make sure we don't set a precedent down the line to to keep doing this.
Thank you, Councilman, for addressing that, thank you. All right, same thing with Duke. We'll put him on that agenda and as long as the payment plan is going accordingly, we won't have to have that, that meeting. So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCullough, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Okay. Item number eight, Class F Liquor License, Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of a Class F1 liquor license for Stephen Halas of Easy Bar LLC for June 19th and June 25th, 2021 at Mian Overlook, is Mr. Halas here?
Don't see anybody, oh, yep, he just came up.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Halas.
Hi, how are you?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, yeah.
All right, just state your name.
Guys, how you doing, Stephen Halas?
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Halas? I see you're doing two events at Mian?
Yes, two weddings, yes.
Okay, just want to explain a little bit about your company.
Yes, it's a bartending service, the, all the beverages, I bring, I set up the bar. The beverages are provided by the host, so both ways we provide it by the the host, I bring it there and I serve it, make sure everybody's happy and doing the right thing.
I am familiar with Mr. Halas's company and it's a very reputable company, does a great job and I'm honored that he's doing business in the town, I think it's, I think it's great, especially for Mian, so
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like working, it's a beautiful place, guys, the great job, really, really nice.
Thank you, we take a lot of pride in that.
Oh, you should.
Thank you. Is there any further questions for Mr. Halas? Do I have a motion to approve the Class F1 liquor license for the
So moved. So moved.
Who's that, Councilman Laportio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCullough, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close your eyes, have it, good luck, Steve, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, take care.
Good luck, Steve.
Good luck. Okay, item number nine, Shiloh Gospel Temple, Councilman Amerigi requests discussion and possible vote regarding alleged noise issues at Shiloh Gospel Temple at 974 Charles Street, this item was continued from the February 2nd, 2021 regular meeting for board members of the church to attend. Community Police Officer Tom Jones cannot attend the meeting tonight. He said he is working with the parties involved and he would be willing to reach out to both parties if there is a further issue, so Councilman, I don't know if you want to address anything?
So, so, Mr. President, thank you, I do see Pastor Eric Perry is in the, in attendance and it looks like there are others from the board as well. I will kind of caution the council in saying that President, it's your forum, obviously, and allow whatever discussion you want, but with Lieutenant Jones not here and the neighbors also not here, I would be kind of loathe to get in too much of a discussion, but I will say for the record that I have heard from the neighbors who worship the kind of the impetus behind the complaints and they have actually spoken very highly of the measure that Shiloh Gospel has taken in the last month. They said that noise problems have been almost completely eradicated. The parking issues have somewhat solved themselves and from what I understand and speaking to Councilman Famigetti earlier today, the ordinance committee took some actions to enforce the no parking from 25 feet to the corner, at the corner of Charles Street in Volturno. And like I said, you know, without the police present and the original complainants present, you know, I don't know that we should delve too much into a discussion other than to say great job by the church and really kind of, you know, step into the plate and addressing these noise issues, but like I said, I do see them here and I do see them raising, I'll leave it up to you.
If they want to make a brief comment, since they logged on, they're more than welcome to. But as long as everything seems to be going good, I mean
Yeah, we could let it even pass off the agenda.
I'm satisfied, did they want to say anything or I'll just pass it off the agenda?
I'm bringing him in right now, sir.
Hello?
Hello.
Yes, how you doing, Councilman?
Good, how are you, can you just, thank you for logging on, did you just hear Councilman Amerigi, we're having a little trouble hearing tonight.
Okay, can you see me?
No, I cannot.
Okay.
Hello, this is Reverend Perrin.
Hello?
Yeah, how you doing?
Hi Reverend, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you clearly.
There you go. Okay, we can see you. Reverend, you really sound like you're talking from above.
Thank you so much.
Reverend, were you able to hear Councilman Amerigi's?
Yes.
What are you saying?
Yes, sir.
All right, if you, if you wanted to say anything, you're more than welcome to, but other than that, we're just gonna pass it off the agenda because everyone seems to be fine with what's, you know, going on, so
I was not in, didn't know about the meeting. You know, how I found out, I got a phone call, I thought it was the police department or the councilmen, they come to find out, can you still hear me?
We can hear you better now, actually.
They have come to find out, it was the North Providence newspaper that called me and I didn't know who it was, I said, I'm not taking no statement. Then all of a sudden, I said, why would you be calling me? Then he said, did you know what was said about you and the church? Doing a Zoom meeting, I said, what in the world are you talking about? Then he said, listen, I'm giving you, because I didn't know about this meeting. He said, go on there and look on it, and he said, you don't have to give your side of the story. He said, but what was said, it was some things said about the church that should not have been said about it. And when I heard on the Zoom meeting on last week, it was terrible, very well-known in this city, been pastor in this city of Providence, on Rhode Island for 33 years, I felt very insulted. Nobody said anything about me coming on this Zoom meeting, if it wasn't for the North Providence newspaper, I wouldn't know anything. Now, the police now, during that week, I don't have my calendar, I had a four-day service, we were celebrating for Martin Luther King and also my birthday service. The first night the officers came out, I didn't go out, we have a retired sheriff that comes to our church and he went out to meet the officers and they said it was no founding of loud music. The second night they came out, same thing happened, then the third night, it was three cop cars that came, three, three cop cars. They didn't want me to go outside because I'm not good at these things, I'm better in the pulpit than I am dealing with stuff like this. And when I went outside, talked to the officer and I said, what in the world have you got three cop cars in front of this church? He said, well, we had a complaint of some noise and but we were out here five minutes, we didn't hear no noise at all. You know, and I talked to him, I got very upset and he pointed to the house or to the church. One of the members said, Pastor, you know, this is gonna cause problem. And then one of the members pointed to the house next door, said it must be the people there. And so the officer said, Reverend, go back into the church, we don't hear no noise. We will go next door and speak to the neighbor. Then so that was on that Saturday, when three, Sunday, yes, Sunday, when three officers came. Then they came back on that Monday, we had our last day of the service. Another officer was there and we talked about it. So I called the the North Province Police Department, told them that I felt like I was being a little harassment by the police. And he apologized that it should not, it shouldn't have been that way. Then after that, I called the community police. We had a meeting with them and I told them I nobody never told me about this meeting. It was not fair to have my name in our church name, the way it was, I felt was was not the correct way. And I know a lot of people in in the city, this is very embarrassing, that couldn't went against our establishment. I am, I've been pastoring thirty-three years, God be my witness, I've never smoked a joint in my life. And for her to say there was some people smoking joints and what do you call that stuff?
Weed.
Weed, I don't know what it is, weed.
What she said.
And and she said, even with the door closed, you could smell it. This is terrible. Now, when I first moved here three years ago, we cleaned this place up. We I before I brought the building, I went across the street, spoke to the neighbor. There was a church here before we moved here. Was there any problem with any noise? They said, well, if you open the door to the sanctuary, you will hear it. So I said, we don't use that door, we use the other door. And then and from there, the neighbor across the street welcomed us to welcomed us here. And then the second week I was here, I never met the mayor in my life. He stopped his truck because he owns two houses on the street. He stopped his truck and after he stopped his truck, he asked me, who was I? I said, Reverend Perry. I said, you know, a friend of mine, like he's like a father to me, Bishop Robert Farrell. He said, oh, I used to play golf with him. He said, what is this you're going to be doing here? I said, sir, we're going to be, this is going to be a church. He said, I heard about you, how clean you guys cleaned this place up. And he said, welcome to North Providence, you ever need us, called us. But but what that meeting on what would happen that I was invited to, the stuff that was said, I've never heard anything like it might, like I did talk to Jim Vincent. You know, I have a lot of colleagues, I'm on TV here, I'm on two TV stations here in Rhode Island for for fifteen years. If somebody heard that we have what do you call that stuff again, weed in the yard and in the church, that's my reputation. That should not have been discussed. And then and then it was never like the community police said, it was supposed to went to the community police, both of us neighbors, and they couldn't record up, then you guys were to talk about it. But it wasn't fair. Now, I have over three thousand followers on my Facebook page. If I would take that that link of what what was said last time and put it on, it's going to be a lot of trouble. There's too much stuff going on with, you know, defunding the police, too much disrespect. I I love the police, I I love leadership, I appreciate what you're doing, I'm not that kind of person. But if somebody heard what some of that stuff was said last week, it's a lie. I'm very upset, very upset. Some of the members even want to take a drug test, you know, they want to call lawyers or a lot of, I don't want that kind of stuff, we don't want that. We've been here three years and then the last time it snowed, we had we had snow here, I was shoveling the yard. The neighbor across the street came out, he said, how you doing, Reverend? I said, fine. And I told him what was going on. He said, Reverend, you've been here three years, we never heard no noise. Then I have another minister that comes that rents space here. He is Chapman Police of two police stations in Rhode Island, not in Rhode Island, I'm here in, yes, Rhode, Rhode Island. And he couldn't come on tonight, his name is Pastor Phillips. And we and we have some officer West, which is, it's, what is Officer West? The Rhode Island State Trooper, his his nephew comes here, we we're very respectful people. And if you will go back and listen to that Zoom, that that really came against who I am and who this ministry is. And we have never, and this he said, got a nervous that those people running up and down the street, three o'clock in the morning, that's a lie from the pits of hell. So I I don't know what I'm going to do, I'm just very upset. But I do think, I thank God for the community police, Lieutenant Jones, he really talked to me to to calm this down because this could have turned into something else. I, you know, I do a lot of funerals for the state of Rhode Island, I'm on the front line, I've never been been embarrassed in all my life. If some of my colleagues would have heard what was said, I I'm hurt and I'm upset. And and I, you know, that's not the way for us to come to meet one another.
Hey, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Reverend?
Mr. President, I don't have any questions, just have a comment and I I sympathize with the Reverend. And Reverend, I actually live the street over from you. Never had any issues over there too, and I'd love to sit down and meet with you. And we can discuss, and I'm glad that everything's working out now too, so everything seems to be working out. Thankful for Lieutenant Jones's work in in this as well. And but I'd like to sit down, meet with you in a different forum. Again, like you said, sad we had to meet this way, but I'd like to meet with you personally when we can.
Well, I I pray and hope things work out. We're here for for peace. You know, we're going to a lot during this pandemic, we're helping many families, you know, and we do a lot in the community. And I did have one of the pastors here, like I said, he's a chaplain, I think in Smithfield. And he took one of those things, or Destimo things, I don't know what you call it, to measure the music. We went in front of the house, it wasn't nowhere near that. And and, you know, it just was terrible because none of these neighbors are wonderful on the street. We never had no complaint. Now, I know there was a problem with the parking to the corner, but I heard that they're going to put signs there not to park there anymore. You know, we and we, I've been, I've been a pastor here in Rhode Island thirty-three years. And my family, we have eight churches in in Rhode Island, we have never been embarrassed like this. You know, I didn't put this, I didn't put it on my this link from that meeting on my page. If I do that, there's three thousand followers on there. And I did funerals for the mayor, I've been, I've been with the governor, you know, I was like NW, how you say?
NW.
NWCAP, you know, I I, you know, I'm involved with the Minnesota Lions, I'm just a little nervous right now, just someone, if you go back and listen to what how that meeting went, it wasn't fair, nobody told me one thing about it. They should have went to the community police, then talked to me and the neighbor, then you guys should have had that meeting. It's like I wasn't there to offend myself.
Well, I do apologize for that. And I mean, like we said, I Officer Jones called me before the meeting and he said, you know, everything is going great, everyone's.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Everything and and I I think on behalf of the council, I know I can speak for myself, the council, the mayor, we appreciate, you know, everything for the community. And, you know, this item, like I said, if you weren't on, I was just going to move it off the agenda, we weren't even going to discuss it. But I wanted to give you the opportunity to speak, so.
Well, I I apologize if I seem.
No, no, that's that's okay.
Forgive me, and I, you know, I I respect everyone here. We're living in such a, so much stuff going on in United States, we need to stick together, work together. And I pray that maybe one day we all can come together. And I know one of our ministers here, this possibility be working for the North Province Police Department as one of the chaplains. And we're here to help, you know. And now I would say one more thing, now the last, the reason, the last time I saw the officer, I called the sergeant, North Province Police Department. And that was on that Monday, I can't think Monday, I can't remember, on the twenty-fourth, I think it was twenty-fourth of January. And 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 and, you know, the twenty-fourth of of January. And the the off, I talked, when I called the the police station, you know, the the police, the policeman said, Reverend, forgive me for them keep sending the officers to the church. He said, but if you don't hear from us, he said, everything is all right. But if it wasn't for the North Province Police Department, if they didn't call me, I didn't even know that that was discussed without me being there. I know a lot of people in this city, God forbid if they would go back and hear that for someone say that we're smoking weed in the yard and 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 God's house. Do you know how, I've been here in United, in thirty-three years pastoring and I'm on the front line, we're supposed to be working together. I just don't want nobody to hear that that Zoom, that our Zoom meeting that's up there. You know, we we're trying to do our best, we we're not bothering nobody. You know, this is not the time for this to happen. And and it's it's not hip hop music, it's gospel music, that's our inheritance, we're not bothering nobody. We never had no complaint on the street. I talked to guy across the street, he would like, he wanted to write a letter to the mayor or write a letter to 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 the to the to the to the councilman of this area, he said, we never had no problem. Now, the the house next door to the church, we were buying that church, buying that buying that house. But but we was moving too slow and the two guys didn't even tell us these sold out. But if you go back and listen what was said, that stupid stuff that was said, it is terrible. Now, what if some of my colleagues heard that meeting? We never had no smoke coming out of this church. And I I've never thought I have to go through anything like this. You know, I did my best here in in Rhode Island, my family is very well known, we got seven churches throughout Rhode Island. And one of our, one of our, one of our members of another church is is the assistant to the mayor of Providence. Now, I I, otherwise, I I thank God for North Providence, it's a good place. The the, thank God for the mayor, and I want to just also say that the police officers handled themselves well. Well, you know, but still, what do you say, defamation of character, that's what I felt like, defamation of character.
Reverend, if you don't mind, the mayor would like to speak for a second. Go ahead, Mayor.
Yes, Reverend, when are you at the church?
We we have, well, our our service is first of all, there's two other churches that's leasing from us. My brother is called, his name is Pastor Greg Perry. And they was in the hotel downtown Providence and we bought this building. His service is on Sundays from ten to twelve, twelve o'clock. And the church where I pastor is Shiloh Gospel Temple, I have my service from twelve fifteen until three.
Where and when can I meet you?
Anytime, anytime you want to, you can come here, I'd love for you to come and see the building anytime.
Okay, so can we meet in the next couple of days? Because as a neighbor, I haven't heard any problems there, to be very honest with you. And as the council says, you know, we try to be neighborhood friendly and business friendly. So I just want to make sure that I chat with you, I can come down with the Lieutenant Jones.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, Reverend, we could clear the air so that, how can I say, we all could live happily ever after.
Yes, sir.
So to say, but can I meet you in the next couple of days?
Yeah, yes, sir, you you may, you may intently, Lieutenant Jones.
Why don't you call my office tomorrow morning and give me your cell number and I'd like to get together with you so that I can report back to the council also, how's that?
Then Mayor, if you don't mind, if I could attend the meeting and Reverend, if you don't mind, if I attend the meeting as well, we could coordinate.
That's not a problem with me.
Thank you.
So Reverend, if you could call the office tomorrow and I can chat with you and we can set up a time to get together, okay?
All right, and I I do, you know, apologize if I was kind of loud or just little, you know. But like I said, it wasn't for the North Province Police Department, the North Province newspaper called me, but I did not give them a story. They didn't want to tell me about the meeting, about the meeting to the newspaper call me, they've been calling me twice yesterday. I'm not giving no my side of the story, I want to bring peace to this because, you know, I I want peace.
All right, thank you, Reverend, and okay, so I'll move this off the agenda. Okay, item number ten, Clerk Base, IT Director Ralph Nahigan, they wishes to address the council for discussion and possible vote concerning extending Clerk Base services to include live streaming of meetings now that Granicus contract has expired. Ralph, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. As most of you know, Councilwoman Brady several years ago brought live meetings to the to the town where we were streaming with a service called Granicus. Their service has increased dramatically in price over the years. It also has a solution that has several pieces of hardware in it that's kept in the chambers. That hardware costs us on the IET side, you know, probably several hours a month to maintain. That contract was up for renewal, they want twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the renewal. Clerk Base, that most of you guys are familiar with, we use that for our charter, our town ordinances, processing of the minutes of the meeting for the public. They also provide a video solution that this year several departments, several municipalities, including West Warwick, Barrington, Cumberland have all switched to. It's at a much cheaper cost, the setup will be seventy-five hundred dollars and the actual cost will only be six thousand dollars a year. And that will also allow the, it will also sort of view it, you have to go to our website, you have to go to a special site on our website to go to the Granicus server and choose the meetings. This will actually be kind of how we do it now, where the meetings are actually posted live on YouTube. So we currently have a YouTube channel, the Town Council would have their own YouTube channel for the meetings. And it will broadcast live on YouTube as well as keep the recording there where they can actually click on the minutes and it'll move the video to the proper agenda item. That's part one, because part two is we have to come up with a hybrid solution. My recommendation, not that we have to, but my recommendation is the council has to come up with a hybrid solution for the council chambers. Whether or not we're going to go, whether the state allows you to go live in public with a full council, you know, council chambers full of people or whether you're going to have some online and some offline. The current situation right now is we can broadcast to the public, but we don't have the ability for the public to comment if you guys were in the chambers properly with the audio and stuff. So basically, what I'm looking for is seventy-five hundred dollars to Clerk Base to switch to this solution. And then we're looking at probably, we don't have the final numbers, but I have to have a budgetary number to know what it is we can do in the council chambers to be able to do the hybrid. I'm looking for thirty thousand. That should get us to where there would be two monitors set up, up council, up on the platform where you guys are, as well as two eighty-inch monitors on wheels for the public. And then to fix our audio solution to be able to have you guys hear the public when they want to speak and so that they can hear you on the outside.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ralph?
Well, I don't know if it's a question for Ralph or for Mark or for the mayor. Does this have to be publicly bid though, these these services?
The Clerk Base portion of it, they are on state contract and they have been going out to bid by other agencies. So that would be a simple one for us to obtain. The the actual video solution and audio solution in the chambers, if we don't find someone, we are meeting with someone there Tuesday who is on state bid. But I'm not, you know, the mayor's always taught me that state bid doesn't mean it's cheaper. So do the work and if we have to go out to bid ourselves, it would still be worth it if we think we can get it cheaper than state bid.
And and it's, I don't have a question but a comment. My understanding is that there's a bill in the State House right now that is going to require all these meetings to be live streamed, so we may not have a choice pretty soon if it if it gets any traction.
You're on mute, Steve.
Okay, Ralph, so the thirty thousand dollars for the monitors and stuff, that does not include the seventy-five hundred dollar setup and the six thousand dollars, that all coincide together? No, the seventy-five hundred for Clerk Base itself, that's for the hardware we need just to stream the video, just to stream the meetings. That but that's not part of the thirty, right? So you need thirty plus thirteen change. Yep, the the set, the seventy-five hundred covers us for the first full year plus the hardware to simply stream the meeting. Then the thirty would be from a separate company that we would set up the chambers in order to work as a hybrid model.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
It might be to what Councilman Di Lorenzo might be looking towards. Ralph, can't we, and Mary Ann, can't we pay this out of the one percent account? And what I mean by that, Councilman Di Lorenzo, is the one percent that comes out of the recording fees for historical records and preserved meetings and preserved town records. You probably can pay this out of the one percent account rather than the regular budget. Am I correct, Ralph? Or have you looked into that yet?
Yes, that was actually my, I I should have mentioned that in, that's where we would like to see the money come from. That's what where all the stuff for the council chambers has come from, so it would be part of that whole project. So it would be part of that whole project.
Yeah, we have the one percent and the ten percent account. We have both of those that can be for, uh, technological upgrades and historical preservation is what they, uh, use for. And I think that that falls under both.
There's plenty of money there, by the way.
I was just gonna ask you, Mayor, ask the clerk mayor how much money is in those accounts. Probably is.
There's, there's a considerable amount, Mark. We can, you know, we could give you the final number, but there's plenty of money there to take care of this.
No, I don't care what the number is. I just, I guess I saw where Councilman Di Lorenzo was going, trying to get the numbers straight. I just wanted to let him know that there are these other two accounts over there.
My only question to you, Ralph, and I think we might have chatted about this once before, was there any portion of this job of being that we have the workforce that we have that we could take care of ourselves in-house?
Uh, there would be some of it. It would be, um, it would be the, more of the purchasing the equipment than the actual installation. We would probably do most of the installation, but there would be some electrical work that has to be done for the monitors. I mean, we still have, uh, you know, in our council chambers, we still have, uh, I'm sure, you know, when we do the financial town meet, you know, the budget. I mean, we're still pulling down a screen, you know, you know, we're a little behind with that, so we really need to upgrade that.
Okay, any more questions for Ralph? Mayor, can I take a motion to send this to the Finance Committee?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, second by Councilman Laporte. Any questions? There be none of them in favor? All those opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you. Thanks, Ralph. I appreciate, uh, you working on that for us.
Ralph, you can't go anywhere yet, though, Ralph.
Okay, number eleven, zoning ordinance discussion impossible vote on addressing the town of North Providence zoning ordinance. I'm gonna make a motion to refer this to the ordinance committee. Um, I think as, as many of you have read a lot of the Breeze articles, uh, several attorneys have discussed confusion in the, uh, zoning ordinance. And I think this is something we should take a look at cleaning up so we can avoid a lot of these problems we've had before on the zoning and planning board of late. So I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the zone, uh, the, the ordinance committee. Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor, go ahead.
No, no, it's okay. You can take a vote. I just want to.
Floor's open for discussion.
So I'm just wondering, and I would also defer to, to, uh, Mark on this. I'm just wondering if, um, we should think about some type of a moratorium? Because there is a great deal of confusion between the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, and it's putting both of those boards in a difficult position. Is the answer a moratorium? I don't know legally. Uh, you know, can we do that? But, um, they, both those boards can't go on, uh, the way they are. The planning board sent into the zoning board, uh, this is okay. We're recommending approval. Let me guess, to the zoning board, wait a minute. The zoning ordinance says you can't do this. So, uh, this is not good. It's not healthy. Again, I don't know the answer, but maybe we gotta think about a moratorium until we address it.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with you, by the way.
I'll, uh, I can speak to the town solicitor, uh, and Kelly Morris this week, um, as the president, and see, I agree with the mayor. It seems like it's a lot of confusion and a lot of contradictions. Uh, but I'll talk to Anthony Galone about it just to make sure that nobody thinks the moratorium might be like depriving somebody of their property or something or to process. That's all I'm concerned about. If we can get past that, Mayor, I don't disagree. Let's calm things down until we straighten it out. But I'll talk to Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, a motion's been made in second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Item number twelve, Dorment Avenue. Councilman Samagetti requests discussion and vote regarding speeding issues on Dorment Avenue. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, so this is just one of the many speeding issues that we have going on in the town. So, um, I don't want to belabor the point. I'll just make a motion to refer this to the ordinance committee.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Samagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman, what was that? Any questions?
Mister Chairman.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Once again, Mister Chairman, Steph, just keep in mind when you do meet on that, that the part of Dorment Avenue is in the city of Pataque.
Right.
So we may have to, uh, if we're gonna do something there, maybe in conjunction with them, or at least notify them as to what we're gonna do.
Yeah, that's not a problem, Mayor, um.
Just want, but so you didn't, you know, waste your time and then say, okay, now we gotta get Pataque to agree, you know?
No, of course. And I think, you know, this street is gonna be lumped into a conjunction or big discussions, a number of fleets that we have to deal with. And also, if you want to stay on, Mayor, I'm gonna go over item number fifteen. Your input might be helpful on this too. But, uh, I think we need to vote, right, uh, do you know?
Yeah, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the eyes have it. Item number thirteen, Angelo Avenue. Councilman Samagetti requests discussion and possible vote regarding parking issues on Angelo Avenue. Councilman.
Uh, Mr. President, this has come to me a couple of times, um, the, this is a narrow street. It's a dead end. Um, particularly at the end of the street where it intersects with Charles Street. Um, there's been some congestion. It's caused some issues with the trash, um, truck coming up the road. Um, so, uh, I'd just like to send this one to the ordinance committee as well.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Samagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mister Chairman.
Laporte, any questions? Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, so Steph, just to, uh, and I agree with you all heartily, this particular residence is, uh, in the hands of inspections right now. Um, yeah, give me a call.
Okay, we'll talk tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor.
Item number fourteen, Lowe's Security Speakers. Councilman Samagetti requests discussion and possible vote regarding security speakers at Lowe's. Councilman.
Well, thank you, Mister President. So, uh, Lowe's, if anybody's been there, and I'm sure we all have, they have those nice, uh, big security, um, the, uh, stations where they have speakers and the, the blue lights and everything, which I think is good for the parking lot, that, you know, deters any crime or whatnot. But the problem is it advertises the fact that it's a security monitoring system and, uh, some of the neighbors can hear it from across the street. So I think at this time, I, uh, maybe we'll, I'd like to make two motions. Number one, I think, um, I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to the management at Lowe's, um, requesting that they control the volume of those speakers.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Samagetti. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
By Councilman Maton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Go ahead, Stefano.
Uh, I think, y- you know what, uh, Mister President, I will make a second motion. Let's see how the, uh, the letter does first.
Okay. Item number fifteen, North Providence Speed Bump Summit. Some Councilman Samagetti request, uh, request discussion and possible vote regarding the North Providence Speed Bump Summit. Councilman.
Thanks, Mister President. So, uh, as I alluded to, and I'm sure the other councilman, uh, council members can attest to this, a lot of speeding issues in this town. We've been dealing with the past two years, at least since I've been the, the chairman of the ordinance committee. A lot of requests for, um, stop signs, now more requests for speed bumps. We, we're already the stop sign town where we have a lot of stop signs. Uh, I think, uh, between eight and nine hundred stop signs that are up. My fear is that we're gonna become the speed bump town. Now, at least in my district and Kenny's district, we have, I think, maybe six streets that are requesting speed bumps right now. So what I want to do before we go down this road and put speed bumps on these streets and go through the petition process that we have in place, and that could potentially open up the doors to neighboring streets, and we're gonna have speed bumps on every street. Um, I did request the police to come tonight. I know, uh, Lieutenant Jones couldn't be here. Mary Ann, did we request the, uh, the chief as well as the chief on?
I don't believe the chief could come. Um, I did, I did have, uh, Troy call him today, and he said that Lieutenant Jones was going to come. And I guess Lieutenant Jones couldn't come after that, so.
All right. Well, that's, that's not a problem anyway, because I don't think we need to have an in-depth discussion, um, at this point. But, um, what I'd like to do is I'd like to refer these two committees because I don't know what the solution is going to be. I, I think maybe the answer to this question is more enforcement. This is why I wanted the police to be here. Do they need additional resources? Do they need fines increased? These are things that we can, we can talk about. So what I'd like to do, I'd like to make two motions. First, I'd like to send this to the ordinance committee.
So moved.
Okay, a motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? The eyes have it.
And I'd like to also send it to the Finance Committee as well, Mister President, just to see if there is a financial need that the department is saying, you know, maybe we can try to, uh, add a different unit to our police department. And there's a financial cost that we, we can explore, see if that's an option.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Samagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Right, and by Councilman Maton. Any questions?
I, I want to make one, I want to make one statement to, to piggyback on Stefano. I've been on the council for two and a half. This is going on to my third year. I've been on ordinance, uh, with him. There hasn't been a time, one, one time where there hasn't been stop signs, speed bumps arranged and multiple, you know, on, on every committee meeting. I mean, people, uh, for some reason, I don't know why, they just don't pay attention to, uh, to stop signs. But I just wanted to agree with him on that, and we gotta come up with some kind of a solution because it's, you know, it's, we can't put any more stop signs up.
Mister Chairman.
Mayor.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I wholeheartedly, uh, agree. Um, we've talked with the police a number of times. First of all, uh, Steph, between you and Kenny, we need a list of those streets. But the answer, in my opinion, I told the chief and everyone there, we need more police presence in the neighborhoods. That's bottom, bottom line. And I'm not throwing anyone under the bus. But I ordered them, don't let me see one of those police cars parked on Merle Spring Avenue on the side of a building when they should be in a neighborhood. So I just want you to know, I agree. Is the answer more speed bumps? I'm not sure.
I agree.
Not sure. So, but we, listen, we're gonna stay on top of it. If you need our help or, you know, but get us a, a list of those streets because there, we've already given them a few. But the bottom line is, look, anyone that's familiar with Powell Road, you can't go down Powell Road and think you're not gonna see an officer. I mean, really, it's not, I'm not trying to be funny, but we, that type of, um, feeling in town, someone needs to know, well, listen, don't cut through, uh, uh, Gillan Avenue, by the way, to get to Pataque because you're gonna have a problem.
Right.
If you're speeding. So again, uh, and by the way, we don't need another, um, you know, how can I say, uh, um, of the police department? That's their job. That's their job. And I told them, you need to report to me back. How long did you spend on Wentz Scott Lane? How long did you spend on, okay, I'll mention again, Gillan Avenue? We need to know. And that's the only way you're gonna get cooperation is if you demand presence.
I couldn't agree more. And the fact that you brought up Powell Road, that's exactly what I was thinking of. And, you know, the fact, the fact that I put speed bump summit here, in here, is not an indication that I want speed bumps. Uh, what I'm trying to foreshadow is that if we don't do something in enforcement, if we don't make some changes, then we're gonna have these speed bumps everywhere, and I don't think anybody wants that. So, um, I couldn't agree more, and, uh, Mayor, you're, you're more than welcome to come to the ordinance committee to sit, and we'd love to have you on that discussion as well, see if there's anything we can do to strengthen our laws. And, uh, Mister, uh, do we vote on the last motion, Mister President?
Yes.
No, not the last one. The last one I opened up for discussion, so. All those opposed? The eyes have it.
I will say one thing. They do work on Wentz Scott Lane. I, well, because that street's awful long and everything. So there are instances where those speed bumps do work, but not on a street that's only three hundred feet, you know, long. Me and Mister Laporte were driving somewhere the other night to go see something. There was two speed bumps. Steve can attest, it must have been, what, within fifty feet of each other?
And a stop sign, and a stop sign immediately after.
Talk about overkill.
Exactly. That's what we're trying to avoid. And Mister President, if I could just make two more motions, the next motion, I'd like to also send this to our Public Safety Committee.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Samagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Who is that by? I'm just getting feedback again.
Take, take a, take a.
Councilman Bacala, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it.
The last motion, Mister President, I would just ask that our clerk send, um, correspondence to the police department to make sure that they are at all of these committee meetings when they are set.
Okay, a motion been made.
Our office also, please.
And add the mayor's office set by the, by Councilman Samagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala. Any questions?
Yeah. Yes, n- not so much a question, more comments. But so, so to that end, uh, Councilman Familiety and Mayor, I, maybe we should endeavor to just try to have the meetings at the same time. I, I mean, make it a true summit because the, the issues are so overlapping that if we're gonna have three separate, or, uh, three separate committee meetings, the same topic, it might be of value to, to kind of, if not the exact same time, but the same evening, also help get the, you know, the proper players in the same place at the same time. They don't have to commit to, to meetings on, on three separate days. Um, you know, I agree with the mayor. I mean, since the first day I was on the council, the thing that he's always emphasized is more police in the neighborhoods. And I'm not saying that they don't do it, but I, you know, I'm, I'm, what I am saying is there's no need for the amount of speed bumps that, that, you know, some of the neighbors are requesting. This is, this is an issue that, that can be addressed a variety of ways. And, you know, maybe we can also come up with some ways to make sure everybody's held accountable, including the, the police. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm all for it. Just, you know, coordinate with me. I'll, I'll make that finance committee meeting whenever you want to have it.
Right, thank you. Okay, a motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Item number sixteen, Diane Drive. Councilman Samagetti requests discussion and possible vote regarding plowing on of Diane Drive. Kenny, can you just take over for one minute? I need to feed my dog.
Councilman?
All right, I'll just be very quick over here. This is, um, uh, a street that's, uh, of, of Vierty. Um, actually, it's off of Irving, and which is off of Vierty. It's a small dead end. There's one house on it and a side of another house seems to get skipped with the plowing. Probably because DPW thinks it's a driveway, to be honest. But, so I'd just like to make a motion that we send a letter to DPW, just making sure that they don't forget to plow that street when it does snow.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Familiety. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Councilman Bacala. Any, uh, comments, questions, or discussion?
If I may, uh, uh, Ken, uh, Steph. So, um, I'll address that tomorrow morning because over the last three, well, four or five storms, a same person has been plowing the same neighborhood. And I will make sure that, uh, we talk to that gentleman and, um, address it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I thought you had that on the agenda because that street being as short as it is, that's where Henry D. Tomaso used to live, by the way.
That's right.
Short as it is, I thought maybe they were complaining as to the end of the street, the snow's getting plowed, and then it gets into the guy's driveway, you know?
No.
But, uh, we'll take care of that.
Now, Mayor, that's Henry D. Tomaso's granddaughter's house now as well.
Oh, is that right?
They kept it in the family.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, uh, any further comments, discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The eyes have it. Um, issue, uh, sorry, agenda item number seventeen, Superior View Boulevard. Councilman Marton requests discussion and possible vote regarding speeding issues on Superior View Boulevard. Councilman?
Thank you. Yes, uh, I got a call from a constituent with regard to, uh, Superior View Boulevard. As most of you know, that's a, uh, it's a pretty wide street, but it does, um, it is utilized as a cut through. So, uh, I talked to Councilman Di Lorenzo and, uh, the police. I believe if they haven't already, they're going to be, uh, attempting to use a speed trailer just to get some data on what's going on over there. But, um, but I'm happy to, um, make a motion to send this to our ordinance committee, uh, so we can kind of look at it, uh, with, um, with all the, uh, the rest of the streets that we're, that we're taking a look at. The only thing I will say is that, um, the person who, who did request that it be put on said that he was coming. I don't see him in the list of attendees, but if he's here, if he wants to raise his hand, he's more than welcome to speak. I, I don't think he's here, but just in case. So in any way, I will make that motion to send it to ordinance.
I, we have a motion by Councilman Marton to send this matter to ordinance. So I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Uh, I am going to skip, uh, number eighteen for a minute since it's, uh, President O'Yellow's, uh, agenda item, and we will move on to, uh, item nineteen. And we will move on to uh item nineteen, bid for audit contract. Request permission to go out to bid for the audit contract for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. Mayor?
Yes, that's just a three, a three-year audit bid that's coming up this year. I had um the bid specs approved by the Audit General's Office, and they're ready to go if we're ready to go. We just need a motion to.
Yes, anybody who'd like to make a motion to allow?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, Councilman Martone making a motion to allow this to, to bid. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second from uh Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any discussion on this topic? There being no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Item number twenty, ordinance committee report. Town council discussion, action with regard to ordinance committee report to be presented by Councilman Familiati. Stefano?
Thank you. Um, so the ordinance committee, we met um February twenty-third. We had a lengthy meeting, or actually a lengthy uh agenda. Um, as most of you know, Lieutenant Jones has taken over the role as the community police officer. So um a lot of these items uh were continued from the prior meeting, and he needed some time to get back uh to us with his recommendations. Uh however, there are a couple, there's three things coming out of the committee, uh two of which I'll address now. And uh the third I will address with the uh next item on the agenda. So um regarding parking issues on Pearl Avenue, uh the ordinance committee uh recommended uh that the council request the Department of Public Works put up a no parking signs twenty-five feet to the corner on Pearl Avenue at the intersection of Rosner Avenue. So I'd like to make a motion that uh we send such correspondence to the DPW.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Familiati, seconded by Councilman Martone. Do I have any discussion on that matter? Okay, there being no discussion. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, Councilman Familiati, you had another motion?
Yeah, the last one is just on Volturno Street. Um, no parking, the same thing, just to codify the law that's in, in place. Uh, no parking twenty-five feet to the corner on Volturno to Charles Street, just so that the cars can see as they're pulling out onto Charles Street. So I'll uh, um, I'd like to make a motion that we send a communication to DPW to ask them to put that sign up.
Uh, motion's been made by Councilman Familiati. Do I have a second?
Second.
I believe that was a second by Councilman LaPortio. Question on that matter? There being no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. President Orellolo, um, see that you're back. We did skip eighteen because it was your agenda item. I don't know if you want to go back to that?
Yeah. Thank you. Item number eighteen, town council meetings for two thousand twenty-one. Council president Orellolo requests discussion and possible vote regarding the dates of the remaining regularly scheduled monthly town council meetings for calendar year two thousand twenty-one and a possible amendment change to those dates. I put this item on the agenda every year. Um, and it's due to the fact that our July meeting usually falls right after the Fourth of July. And a lot of people like to get away, and I think especially this year, that we continue to work throughout the pandemic, which I commend everyone. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to cancel our July meeting as we usually do.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala. Any questions on that? Maybe none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Kenny, did you write it, do uh item number twenty-one?
Yes, we'll go back to uh twenty-two now.
Okay.
Uh, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we didn't get to twenty-one. You're right.
Okay. Okay, item number twenty-one, ordinance introduction, discussion, and possible vote to introduce ordinance number twenty-one dash zero zero two, amending, amending chapter nineteen, article ten, section nineteen dash thirty of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence, entitled No Parking on Certain Streets, generally to provide for certain parking restrictions on Wanda Court in the town of North Providence. Do you have a motion to introduce?
I'll make the motion, introduce and advertise public hearing.
Okay, a motion has been made by Councilman Samagetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman LaPortio. Any questions? Maybe none of those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-two, claims submitted. Town council discussion and possible vote for God to the claims received from the following. UPC Insurance for Stephen and Shawna Scardace, P.O. Box one zero one one, St. Petersburg, Florida, three three seven three one. John D. Simone, Esquire for Il Fennello Restaurant, Tony Lanny, seven thirty-five Smith Street, Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine zero eight. Kimba Manswete, eleven Lexington Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine zero four, and Rachel Ariz. Two twenty-seven Villa Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine zero four. Do you have a motion to send these to the Claims Committee? Motion been made by Councilman LaPortio. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Amorigi. Any questions?
I, I have one question, and being the claims, being the claims chairman, that's a big question. What, one, one or two of these were on uh Januaries. They were supposed to be sent to the town solicitor and then sent to the insurance company, especially Il Fennello. I, I'm just asking, did it get kicked back? And it has to go back on again, or is it something different than what was there?
This is.
I don't know who can answer me.
I can, I can answer you. Um, I believe this is in addition to what we paid Il Fennello's insurance company. This is a different, this came in after from the attorney.
This came in after the January one, which gets moved to the insurance company?
Paid the insurance company, Arabella Insurance, we paid, um, cuz they paid to have his lot repaved. So we had approved a payment to Arabella Insurance. This came in after. So this is in addition to that.
Can I, can I ask how much that claim is, this addition right here?
I, I don't think there's a, uh, there's a, uh, let's see. I'm gonna look at it, hold.
I have it right here. It's, it's fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars. This is the same one we already sent to, to Anthony. And I, I don't know if it, if it's just, we have to do it again. But this in January, this one and the other gentleman from the pension, from the police, both were sent to the, the town solicitor.
Arabella Insurance was the one that was representing um Mr. Lanny, and that's the one that paid his claim. We've already paid him them back for, for doing the lot. This is in addition to it. Um, demand relief for the, for listed negligence. This is a totally different thing. He's being represented by a lawyer for this. That, his insurance company already got paid for this.
This is. Uh, okay, I, I'm gonna have to figure this out, because this was over our, I, I could have sworn this was the same one, but I could be wrong.
It is the same one. It is the same circumstances, and it's the same incident. But after the insurance company got paid, we then received this from his attorney. So that Arabella Insurance, the check already went out, that's already paid.
So, so that one was, that one was for fifty thousand too. How much of that did we, did the Arabella pay?
Uh, whatever you guys, whatever was approved. I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Well, then this must go back to December then, before I was on claims, because.
No, if you see, see, it's January twenty-eighth is the date of the letter. It's after the insurance company ca- got paid, this letter came out. So this is in addition to.
Okay. All right.
I think we'll, we'll have to talk about it at the Claims Committee. Uh, we'll, we'll figure it out.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make, I wanted to make sure, cuz I, I got the others. Okay.
Yeah, I thought the same thing, Ron. I did. I thought the same thing, but this is in addition to that claim.
Okay, thank you. So we'll, we'll take it up in claims this month. We did not have a claims meeting in February, so we have, I guess, more, four of these on the agenda plus. Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all those ayes have it. Item number twenty-three, tax abatements under a thousand. Town council discussion and action and possible vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements under a thousand dollars received from the tax assessor in the amount of twenty-five dollars for real estate and three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents for motor vehicles. Do you have a motion to abate? A motion has been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amorigi. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
You know, before you, before you uh make a motion to um
Go ahead.
adjourn, I have to tell you guys, you know, my age, sixty-five, I was able to get a vaccine at uh at the library, North Providence Library. I cannot tell you how professional our fire department, the senior center, how, uh, there were eight, nine hundred people, maybe nine hundred people in and out of that place. They did a great, great job, and I just want to make it public, because let me tell you something, you guys will all be proud. The mayor was there. The mayor was actually moving uh uh wheelchairs. I mean, I, it was great. There were so many people there, helping the, the, the people who couldn't walk. Uh, very proud of uh, of our town. Very, very proud. Thank you.
That's great to hear. The word at the State House, Steve, is, is that North Providence is, is head over heels, but beyond the best, the have the best layout in the uh, in the state. That's what everyone's saying.
That's the word throughout the town.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So we vaccinated eight hundred ninety-four people on Saturday.
Wow.
Without a hiccup, there wasn't a problem. Everyone was sad and happy, and I think for the most part, just because they could come to high school and not have to go anywhere else. So that being said, right now, we're uh going back and forth as to uh where the new regional pods are going to be. And um hopefully, the uh, one of the regional pods will be very, very close to us. But um I'm happy to tell you, and Stephen, we appreciate that. Uh, in the last two sessions, we vaccinated twelve hundred people. And we could have never did it, and you're, you're gonna read about it tomorrow, because we, we wrote in to thank everyone for what they did, but um, and it couldn't have gone done, you're right, though, without the cooperation of the fire department, the senior center, and the volunteers. They did a great, great job, and the community just came together, so I'm, I'm very, very happy and proud of that.
Dino, if I'm not mistaken, I think my mother-in-law went to Triton. Didn't they have it there too?
Tomorrow, they have it.
Tomorrow, Thursday.
On Thursday.
Thursday. She got, she got hers last Thursday, the Moderna one there, so I.
That's awful nice to hear, that uh word in the State House is, uh, what a job North Providence is doing.
This was from a guy from Cranston that works for the House. He has no detachment to the town of North Providence whatsoever. He works for the new speaker, and he, he called me up. And I'm gonna be honest, I was like, I, I didn't even know the guy. I was like, what the hell's this guy want, you know? Said, you guys are, you guys are, you know, doing a phenomenal job. I was like, that's great to hear, so.
I mean, the way they went in, you know, it was absolutely phenomenal.
And by the way, just so you'll know, Dino, and I think I mentioned this to you, our um uh direction, not orders, was to not turn one vaccine back. Because we're the ones who've complained that we didn't get enough, and if we got in, we could take care of our people. So I'm also proud to tell you that the session was supposed to uh be over at eight o'clock on Saturday. Our people stayed till ten.
Wow.
Got on the phone and called people so that we did not turn one vaccine back.
That's great to hear.
That's great.
Great. Oh, thanks, guys. That's, that's some, it's always good to hear good news. We don't hear nothing.
Yeah, right.
Uh, with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Everyone have a good night. Thank you.
Aye.